Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 3rd, 2024 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present. Do not believe we had any public comments registered. So our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the March 20th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those. If you have any additions or corrections, otherwise, we're ready for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Public hearings and recommendations to counsel. We have two items tonight. The first item is a zoning application for approximately 0.38 acres located along North Maple Street to be rezoned from CH and CCO to PRD, it's the Maple 5 PRD, and CCO. And Hamid Mayor is the applicant, or something close to that. Ms. Smith?
Well, good evening. Hope you've had a great showers and change of weather back and forth. This evening, we have this project that we set for public hearing located on North Maple, currently known as 1107 North Maple, where there's an existing single-family detached home on property that is zoned CH, highway commercial, adjacent to an existing RM16 townhome apartment-type project. And it's also within our CCO area. Wow, did we get a new no roller. We got a whole new mouse. I was gonna say. I don't know how to navigate the new one. So, this particular area, as you see here, is in the CH zone district with the RM16 directly below it, CH around the opposite sides to the west and the north, and RD across the street. In our general plan layout, this is actually designated as a mixed-use type of site. What is actually located around it is commercial to the north in the form of a bank. Behind it, there's a car lot, another small commercial business, and my favorite, the Luco's Burritos, to the very north. This particular project, you may recall, as we gave a brief presentation by the applicant last time we were here, they are looking at a five-unit townhome project layout. And one of the things that staff was looking at was the mixed-use type of item within our plans didn't have much room to be able to accommodate that kind of use, but we thought a home-occupation-type administrative use could provide an office addition to it, which would give a somewhat of a mixed-use item, but not a vertical-integrated mixed-use project. The other thing that I think that you brought up was a question regarding some of similar ones for the North Maple Towns Project, which actually was deferred by the Planning Commission, never came back. And that one was at 20.83 units to the acre. This is at 13.01 units to the acre. And then when you look at number of buildings, this is a duplex that looks like a single-family in the front on an interior lot with only about 47 feet of frontage across the front of it. The one that we were looking at at the corner lot of North Maple was 65 feet, three-story, all vertical. So, little bit difference as far as setbacks are concerned as well. They were looking at setbacks in the range of about 14 feet off of Maple and eight feet off of Chestnut. This particular project is looking at a 20-foot front yard setback to the main building and with a porch in the front that does come into and is allowed to encroach five feet. And then it does provide 15% formal open space. Our policy has changed from the prior project to this project that it only requires if you're less than eight units, you only provide 15%, and there's no formal open space requirement for that small of a unit, whereas in the past, we would have required a full 20% between formal and regular open space. But within those provisions, this project does provide that 15%. And then the building itself covers, the two buildings cover 32% of the site. So, staff just wanted to provide that comparative information since there was some questions of the differences between those two. And then lastly, as far as parking is concerned, the project, because they're proposing three two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units, that would normally require them to have a 15 total, or excuse me, 12 total, and they're providing 15. So even though it shows here one guest parking spot to the north, the two three-bedroom units are overparked by one space, but we don't count them as guest parking because they're directly in front of those units. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant to go through his presentation, but I wanted to highlight those areas that Planning Commission had specific questions last night.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Holly. My name's Clyde Roundtree at Huddleson Steel. Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity to present to you the Maple 5 Town Homes. And now Holly's got me worried as well. So are we doing something different? We're not scrolling anymore? Oh, it's still flex. Okay. Okay. There we go. So as Holly mentioned, this is kind of a transitional lot, and I think that was one of the concerns. If it's already zoned, commercial, highway, you know, can we put it back into more of a residential application? And we feel like because there's a property to the south and a property to the, to the, both properties to the east and to the south are residential-oriented, we feel like that is still a transitional property. The bank building is beautiful. That's to the north. I spent some time looking at it today. I believe it's an old restored house. I'm not really sure. Somebody knows history on that, but they did a really good job. But it has a real residential character as well. It doesn't look like a office building. That's why it's kind of confusing. It's a bank. It looks more like a house that's been restored. And then another key component to this piece of property is our owner, Hamid, who's developing this piece, if it passes, he owns the car lot to the west. So that rear property line has floated a lot. I mean, at one point, we had 11 units on this property. We're stretching much more into the green space that's behind us. But, you know, working with the staff, they really wanted to try to keep the integrity of the commercial lot intact, so we preserved as much as possible that existing property line for the car lot. Matthew knew in the future, if we encroach upon that anymore, it may change its conformity in the future if Hamid ever wants to sell it. So we didn't want to kind of lose that opportunity. So, so you'll see, we're asking for some reductions and setbacks on the rear. A lot of that has to do with that, that property line that was floating. So hopefully, we can overcome that. With that in mind, as Holly mentioned, it is a, it's a five-unit development, and I'll walk you through, as she mentioned, the two bedrooms are on the front. Now, that's real important, those have surface parking. The reason they have surface parking is we wanted to keep the scale of the building consistent with the neighborhood. I think that the new standard is really trying to make that, the unit that's closest to the right-of-way to the road look more like a house, a single-family residence. I believe we accomplished that. But part of accomplishing that goal was to have surface parking versus under-the-building parking. So you'll see that as we look through the elevations, but if we, if we put the garages below, this would've been a much larger building. On the back, they are garages. They will face, you know, they're behind, but they'll, the garage doors will be facing the right-of-way. But we feel like because of the depth of the lot, that's appropriate as well. All the lots, all the homes on the back will have their own private patios, and they'll also have a fenced-in area. On the front, the front units will have the patio. That'll service their, basically, private open space. On the plan, we do show where the polycarts are relocated. On the back, they'll be in the garages. On the front two units, the garbage storage will be on the right and left of the parking area. The AC units will be on the right and left of the houses. On the, on the rear units, they'll be in the back. So we want to make sure there's accommodations for AC units. It seems like that's always something that comes up, making sure that polycott storage is considered as well. The mail kiosk is really adjacent to that first open parking lot as you take a right into, into, into the driveway. So that's the kiosk as well. As was mentioned, just want to walk through the architecture. The bottom-left corner is the, the units towards the front, and so you'd be hard-pressed to think that was a duplex. I mean, obviously, it has two doors and has a subset of, you know, the windows, a trained eye would pick it up. But as far as having a residential character, residential scale, I think Chris Turner, who did the design work, did a fantastic job. I'm really happy. I think it's a hard task. I've mentioned that before, that if it's three units, it's really hard to make it look like a single-family home because it looks more like a frat house or a sorority house becomes pretty big. But in this, this case, we feel like it, scale-wise, you could find that on Maple Street. As far as the rear units, you can see those on top-right corner. They all have multiple roof lines, scalable with, with dormers. The dormers are a, basically, a floor, so Hamid wanted, you know, to maximize the living space inside the building, so that is living space up on that floor. But as mentioned, with the garages on the ground level, most of your living space is on the second and third floor. We do have a privacy fence that wraps around the property and separates the commercial from the residential. That's our primary focus, so that'd be on the north side and on the west side. Floor plans are included, which is exciting. Chris McGuire here from Huddleson Steel can represent anything you need to know from the utility plan, drainage plan. But we went through all the utilities, and that's one thing we're trying to do, making sure that we're realizing in the CCO and working with Holly, and, you know, there's so many considerations with utilities, especially on the front. So we ran through and made sure that it has a functioning, working utility plan. So we're confident that if it's approved tonight, that we have a plan that we'll be successful in implementing. This just, this slide just basically shows you where the open spaces are in the rear and on the front of the buildings. And then landscape-wise, we want it to be lushly landscaped, as you'd see in a residential home. We do have evergreen screening all the way around the building. We are asking for a reduction in the width of our buffer, and that's primarily, if you look at this lot, it's kind of curious, and I think Holly would testify, Matthew would testify, everyone who's in the planning department would testify, every lot downtown has a curiosity to it. This one, it just, it's not parallel. I mean, the, the road's on an angle, so our lot's not really square to the road, the lot lines kind of fade. So some of the exceptions we're asking for a result of that property line having angles to it versus being square. So in some places, we're in compliance, but as it gets closer and closer and closer to our buildings, that's where the exceptions take place. So just want to kind of bring you, it's not a hardship necessarily, but it is something that's, that's affected in the layout, because we're pretty square on our layout, but the lot's not square. Overall, one thing that Hamid wanted to do was, because we went down to five units, he really wanted to make them probably, how do you say it, nicer than the average townhome. The two bedrooms are over 1,800 square feet, so these are large two-bedroom townhomes. The three bedroom's over 2,200 square feet. So he wanted to make sure that there are substantial size structures. I think that's nice, because I think it does make a nice transition in terms of the scale of the bank buildings across the street. But the townhomes to the, to the south of us would probably be, I don't even know, I think they were 1,200 to 1,400 square feet. So these are larger, but that was his intention, with a larger structure, more living space. With that in mind, I'm here for any questions you may have. We're excited about the project. It's gone through multiple generations already. Hamid's been a great client to work for, Holly's been great to work with, and we've, we feel like we've got a product on site that, that is going to be complimentary to the city. As far as, as Holly mentioned, I was on 604 North Maple that got denied. Well, I guess it got denied or we pulled it, but that was, that was the one on the corner of Chestnut and North Maple. And the challenge we ran into there was, we had to have three units in the front, and the two units were in the back. Our access was off of Chestnut. Chestnut's really almost a substandard road. It's more of an alley than it is a street. So we were trying to access the property from Chestnut, which made it pretty challenging. And then I worked on Maple Key as well, the one that we changed quite a bit, but both of those asked for a reduced front setback. We're not asking for that, so the presentation, I think a lot of people on North Maple, or North Maple Key, it was just the verticality of the buildings, you know, three stories tall, 14 feet off the road. So we don't feel like what we're presenting has nearly that kind of scale concern. And, and I think both 604 North Maple and Maple Key, that was what we all reacted to, was three, you know, three stories vertical with a 14-foot setback. So we feel like we're much more in scale to the neighborhood. We did our best to try to be consistent. I think the Highland Study is not really an overlay that's in this area, but it's an overlay that's influencing a lot of the design in that area. So the Craftsman style is something that we feel like we need to be committed to, just to keep the, you know, keep that, that character that is kind of consistent on North Maple. Again, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them. Chris McGuire, if any questions about engineering side, he's here to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for the team before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. That we will open the public hearing to see if anybody is here to speak on this item tonight. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make any comments to the Planning Commission about the project. Make sure we hear and understand your concerns. So anybody's here that would like to speak, public hearing is open, please come forward.
Hey, my name is Will Perkins. We live at, this is my wife, Molly Beth. We live at 1019 North Maple Street, directly to the south. We're really excited about this plan, to kind of clean up the area a little bit, to have some newer neighbors brought in and everything. So I just wanted to say that we're really looking forward to this, and we're strongly in favor of it. Thank you.
And we want to say thank you for coming out to say you're excited about a project that we're looking at. We love that. Thank you. Anybody else? We'll close the public hearing and ask for any further comments, questions, or discussion from the Planning Commission.
Don't everybody speak up at once?
Well, I will say, I personally think it looks like, I like the project. I think it looks good. I do think they've done a good job with the architecture on it. I think the building on the front looks great and blends in with the neighborhood and the vibe of North Maple Street. The building on the back looks good as well. I personally thought it was, looks like a good project.
I think it looks like a good project, but I think it's got one too many units for that size lot.
I mean, the appearance of it, I think it looks great. I really like the, the look of the front building. You know, I, I can't figure out, I appreciate Holly putting this together, but it's, it's hard for me to figure out if, if, if it's similar density, the things that we've already approved, and if we continue down this road by the, the, the size of the lot, are we going to see five units on every lot that's, that, you know, so I have some hesitation there. So...
Yeah, I agree, because there's some big lots on Maple Street, and this right here, if we approved it as is, that gives you three already on Maple Street. And then you go like the 700 block, there's three or four houses that have an acre lot. So then you're talking about 10, nine, 10 units per lot. So you get down Maple Street, and it's nothing but townhomes all the way down the whole
I was gonna say, the, the property owner next door, the property that they're at is actually at 14.28 units to the acre, and that one was done and approved bulk zoning back in 2016. So that one, I think, is the one that's probably more density on a per-unit basis than the other one, of course. The piece at, that you all deferred, that one would've been at 20.83 units to the acre, which is far exceeds, when you think of our RM16 zone, that's usually 16 units to the acre. RM12 is normally 12 units to the acre. So this one is at 13.01, and that's the exception that they did include in their plan development book for that additional 1.01 unit to the acre request.
Holly, I've got the, the street view pulled up of the property to the south. If, if Cable can pull that up, might provide some...
Is that the one that Burns built? No.
No, this was Jeremy Kelton. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the property to the south.
And then the fraternity house is next to that one.
Yeah, they're the units behind it. I think this is the house that would be demolished.
Right.
And then there's the, what is or was a mortgage company further to the north, but...
So it's something to think about on the Capesig. Capesig's property's four acres, and it's two properties over, so four acres at 13 units an acre. 26, 52 units, two properties down, if they decided to sell and redevelop.
And then the other difference is the building that Matthew was showing, the setback on that one's 30 feet. This one is at 20 feet. Maple Keys is at 14, check, front, is at 15 feet off of Maple and eight feet off of Loki. So that's probably part of the reason it feels so tall is because of the setback, plus it's a true three-story, and it's like almost 40 feet tall. These ones are under 35.
Is the front one shorter than the back one? Are there different heights?
I think they're the same.
It's a smaller building.
It's a smaller building on the interior, and it doesn't incorporate those dormers. The back units incorporate the dormers, which become part of that third floor that's actually tucked under the roof. So that's why it doesn't feel like a true three-story building, and they're able to keep within our 35-foot maximum height limit, and that's to the top of the ridge.
My concern is the parking. It seems like we just, we're down to one guest parking. And you think about North Maple, you have no street parking. So for me, that's my concern.
I mean, I, and let me just go off Reggie. I go down the street most every day, and, and he's right. If there's a car parked on Maple and somebody's coming the other direction, you literally have to stop and then let that car by before you pass the car that's parked on Maple Street. So, point well-made. I don't, I mean, I really love the look of this. I really do. That's what's, I'm struggling with.
I'm in the same boat.
And let me ask, do you, would you think if this had two and two, is that still, you know, I want to, I want to understand where we think in general, you know, we...
I think if we're at two and two, you kind of get the, the density issue that Mr. Halliburton and I are talking about, and you can fix the parking issue that Reggie's talking about all at one suite.
Do you think we could get enough guest parking on the property?
Correct.
To eliminate any parking issues?
Just to add a comment to that, I think anybody who buys that last, the far-right end unit, unless there's a guest parking sign, they're going to assume that's their parking spot, which is my concern for the parking. So I also have a concern with the density, and I would like to see one less unit, and to echo Mr. Wright's comments, if you did that, it really takes care of any issues that we, we pretty much have on this proj, on this project. So, you know, I would be probably more in line with that line of thinking.
Mr. Prince?
It's commercial zone right now, right? So...
No, from, I, I'm like Mr. Halliburton. I drive down this thing multiple times a day, and with the, with the lot dimensions, I, I'm not so sure you could do much commercial with it because of the way the lot's shaped, and by the time you do setbacks and greenery and everything like that, I don't know how much commercial you could really do with it.
I definitely see the parking as being tough on that back two-bedroom, and, you know, it'd be a difficult thing for the owners of it. Otherwise, I mean, other than that, I like it. You just can't count on people to park cars in garages.
No.
So if nobody's in their garage, you have a two-bedroom.
Mr. Roundtree?
First, I'd like to say I appreciate the feedback. I will, I wanted to talk to you about this in particular, because we've, we've really done a lot of gyrations on this particular lot in terms of trying to, we don't, if we took out one unit in this case, we probably don't gain any parking because of nature. I think what we're running into, and I think, I think what we've learned is that these lots are so deep, I mean, they're really curious lots, and I think every one of them has to be looked at in terms of the actual parameters of the lot, the context of the situation, because I think they're all, I think it's really hard to go, okay, if this happens here, it's going to happen down the street. I think it's going to be a case-by-case basis. But if you can imagine just taking out one of the units on the back, it doesn't really change our parking scenario, because we can't, we can't, the only way we can maneuver any cars on the lot, because it's 47 feet wide, we have to kind of have a front-and-back scenario. So if you took one off the back, we can't, we're not able to turn those buildings and gain anything. That's our challenge, is that we've looked at it in so many different ways, it, it, it just lends itself towards a front load and a rear load. It lends itself, and I know that there's even a little concern over having, you know, buildings in the back. We've had a lot of those developments, but just, it's just, the reason it's happening is because these lots, the curiosity lot. So if you asked us to take one away, you know, the only thing it would do is it says, it'd give us more parking just because there's less unit, but the parking arrangement wouldn't change a bit, because there's just no other way to circulate on the site. So I'd ask that you would consider that, and then if the client had to go with maybe another one bed, or another one-car garage, and I, or even go all two-bedroom, I think you'd rather do that. I think what they're running into, you know, I've worked with Brian a lot, and this is new, working with Hamid, but they're trying to take a situation that, I think it's opportune in the fact that it's a neat location, but we've realized just lot after lot, that everyone's difficult. And, and the developers are trying to take advantage of the CCO, which is really giving you the option of having reduced parking counts. They're also taking the CCO option because it gives an option for a little bit more density. So I think it challenges whether the CCO is what we want, because I think this, this works within the parameters of the CCO, but if we're saying the CCO is not really the parameters we want, because if you adequately park us, you know, adequately park, and they're looking at these lots from that angle, they're not looking at them as traditional lots. They're going, I think I can make that work, therefore, I'll buy it. We had, we had the buildings all lined up, where all the buildings were on the southern property line, and they all faced their law office, but the requirements are, you really want that front building to face the right-of-way. So I think the moment we try to start shifting it, it gets curious. We take one lot, you know, one building away, we don't, we may gain one parking space out of that kind of move, because we just don't have any other way to move cars. So rather than asking us to take one away, I'd rather talk to the client about potentially making them smaller in order to have a little bit more real estate, or just, just by having a two-bedroom versus a three-bedroom, we'd probably pick up another space. I think he'd be more willing to do that. I think... I think, I think what you're running into, when you say four, it's gonna become one of those things where they're kinda going, it's, it may not be worth, you know, the effort, because I think they're, I think that's where the density's coming from, because they see it as a possibility to be a good project. But I think the last ones I've run into, it seems like there's more and more resistance towards the density, but that's really why the CCO was created, to allow that to happen. So that's just, that's just my feedback, but, but if you consider that as an option to, to maybe go with a smaller unit, or go with all two-bedrooms, I think our client would be willing to do that. Thank you.
Can we scroll up where we can see the picture of the...
I'm sorry.
Three. See what's going on there.
While you're finding that, I'd just say, I think, you know, I, I really like the look you're going with, I like what you're trying to do, but I think, you know, another option, you know, you can have two really nice units, and drive down the middle and pull around and park in the back, like the first two units on North Maple that actually ever redeveloped like this. And the density is coming from changing one unit into two, and still getting two really nice, not townhomes, but separate, single-family, you know, on the same lot, I get it, but, you know, and getting some density out of it like that, and having really nice-looking projects like this. So...
So Chairman Jones, are you saying...
That could be an option.
Are you saying the possibility of making the front two, single-family detached?
Yes, and nothing in the back.
Right. Oh, and nothing in the back.
Kinda like the Haynes Drive property that we just had come through too. It was, it was four or five units, and now it's four, or it was six units.
It was eight.
Yeah, eight. And now it's just four single-family houses.
On the front.
Yeah, again, I think that goes back to, you know, kinda the challenges with the CCO. I know, I know Brian's done both types, where he, you know, and on Maple, there is one where there's two single-family houses. Our client hasn't even considered that at this point, especially because it's, now, now you think about single-family homes, now you're between a townhouse and between a bank, and there's a car lot behind you. So it gets a little curious.
Which is his, which is his.
What's that?
That is his.
Oh, I, 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 it is, for sure, it's his, but it's still a car lot behind a single, I just, I think it's, I do think it's a transitional lot, that has to be somewhere between, somewhere. I think it's a little bit harder sell. I do think as you go further down Maple, I think the character changes. I think it can change. I think as you go more towards Memorial, I, I, we're feeling more pressure to be on, you know, more on the commercial end, or more of the multifamily versus a single-family. So that's, that would be my thought process on that. We'll get feedback as needed.
So you're, you're saying if we cut, just, I'm looking at this upper-right picture, and just kinda picturing it in my head, cutting that one unit, doesn't that add two common parking spots? If we just put ground park, surface parking right there instead of that unit, and left everything the same, wouldn't that now have two extra common area parking spots?
Um, are you talking about the two-bedroom, Sean, on the...
Two-bedroom in the back, the far-right unit.
Yeah, let me think if that's... We'd probably pick up one space, because we lose the garage space.
Are, are you saying to go with the two, three bedrooms and one bedroom?
No, I'm saying, it, what I was saying was if we cut the far-right two-bedroom unit and just had those...
The one on the end is, uh, is a one-car...
It's a one-car garage, two-bedroom.
He's saying two-bedroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you cut that unit and just had ground, surface parking lot parking instead of that unit sitting there.
I think you'd pick up more room if you cut out the unit next to it and branded it one car, so you have the three bedrooms with two car, and the two bedroom with one, one car, and you can now put more parking on the side. Because for me, that, that, North Maple is a very busy street. Everybody cuts through, so you can't make the sacrifice and say, okay, they can park on the street, because you can't. So that, that's my concern, but...
I think what I'm hearing from the planning commission is that there's a desire for maybe less density and more parking, so would you guys like to do some work on it and bring it back?
I think we can, I think we can. I think we just, I think we can go back and figure out a way to, to navigate through that.
Motion to defer.
And they are large, they are very large, square-footage-wise.
We still have to defer. Yeah, he's really, like I said, he's really trying to do a quality product, so he's, he's not trying to wimp out on, you know, just as cheap as possible, he really wants it to be nice. I know he's gonna really want the five, there's no, I mean, because we've been a lot further than that, but it's, it's a matter, I think we can find a way to maybe squeeze out two more guest parking if we change the, the building size, or change the garages, or something. We just gotta figure it out.
So Clyde, Clyde, you're talking about trying to find a way to keep five but add more parking, and I think that, that may be different from the direction that they're giving you.
Well, I, I'm just saying if they're all two-bedroom, and we have two parking spaces out front for our two-bedroom, plus the garage, now we're overparked, everyone's overparked by one. I do, I do a gain, I'm trying to think, this little gymnastics on, on the fly, but I'm trying to figure out, is there a way to, to, I think if you're parking, if you're overparked, if there's three extra parking, you're right, it's not designated guest parking, but I think if you're, because this is, I think we've run into this, I'm not sure if it's been refined yet with the new ordinance, but, you know, we always talk about guest parking and how much, and we really don't ever have an answer. It's always usually just more than you have. So we have to kinda know if it's gonna be a ratio, you know, if you say you gotta have three guest parking spaces on five bedroom, or five units, and that's something we could really plan for, but right now, if you're overparked, you're using garages, that's our challenge, because there's, these sites don't have a whole lot of room for extra parking, that's for sure. There's, that's surely not the case. So let us look, let us just see if there's something the client can do, and talk to him, and we'll come back with a proposal, if that's okay. That's probably the best we can do tonight, I guess.
And I, I'm just gonna say this, I, and I may be out of line, but I know that y'all had discussions with respects to the property line, between the lot that faces Memorial and then this lot, and you wanna preserve the, the lot that's facing Memorial with respects to how much lot size that you have, but I don't know if any further discussions could be made with respects to encroaching in further, to make, where you do have more parking on this particular lot. I don't know if that's an option whatsoever or not, especially since he owns both lots.
Mr. Halliburton, if I could address that, that's something that they, that they, that was originally part of their plan, and I think we tried to discourage them from doing that, because I think ultimately, we would like to see that car lot redeveloped. So our reasoning for asking them to not do that was not to preserve the car lot in perpetuity, but was to make the commercial lot fronting on Memorial Boulevard viable, so that it could be redeveloped at some point in the future. And the more that this development eats into the depth of that commercial lot, the less viable it becomes for future redevelopment. So I think that's, that's the, that was, that was our opinion as staff...
Right.
As to why we tried to dissuade them from doing that.
Yeah. The, I guess, from my perspective, it's like getting your cake and eating it too. I mean, you're, I, I get it, you wanna optimize, it's, if I had two lots, I would wanna optimize those two lots to the best of my ability, but if, if we're, if we're, as a planning commission, not comfortable with this, then something's gotta break, you know? Is, because as long as I, we, we don't necessarily show much pushback, I think we're just, the fact that he controls both lots, kinda, uh, you know, I think he could work through this, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Either gonna maximize your commercial, uh, lot exposure, and deal with what you have on Maple, or, or vice versa.
Well, I think, I think what we, what we were trying to have not happen is to reduce its viability for future redevelopment, so that it ends up being a car lot in perpetuity, just grandfathered in, because they can't do anything else with the property.
Right. I get it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. McGuire, you'd like to say something?
Oh, sorry, Chris. Chris McGuire, Tuttleson Steel Engineering. I appreciate y'all hearing us tonight. Uh, just wanted to quick, ask a couple questions. Um, I'll, I worked on this latest rendition of the layout, and I'm hearing y'all's feedback, and I wanna make sure that I address it appropriately. So currently, I believe we are at thirteen point oh one units per acre. If we do drop one unit, that puts us still, I think, at about ten point eight units per acre. As far as a residence issue, I don't know if y'all feel like that's a significant difference, and there were statements on, well, what's the four-acre lot gonna do? When we're looking at thirteen point oh one compared to ten point eight, are we really looking at much difference in residence? And as far as parking goes, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that we have three spaces over what is the requirement. Wha, what would planning like to see beyond what we have shown? I mean, if we've got three extra spaces and a guest space, how, I'm not too sure what, what I need to be aiming for as far as a layout. And I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot, but I, I wanna get it right for y'all.
I think the biggest issue is the density.
Yeah, I think the biggest issue is it.
And then the parking will hopefully fall into place after that.
Yeah, and I, I think Mr. Prince's comment that not everybody parks in their garage, you can't make them park in their garage, so we're counting these as parking spots, but there's, that's where the Christmas tree and everything else is gonna be. So you really have one extra parking spot, it, probably usable parking spot.
So, so to Clyde's point, if we looked at them being two bedrooms and didn't include the garages, would that change the opinion at all, or is it still the density?
I, I, for me, it's the density.
I believe that was the majority of the...
What, what does the density need to be?
I mean, there, there's a lot of difference between ten units an acre and thirteen units an acre, just like there's differences in six an acre and nine an acre. Uh, I mean, three units in an acre does, does make a big difference.
Okay. So what should I be aiming for, density-wise? Is, is ten kind of what staff likes to see?
Less than what you have now, how that sounds.
All the way down as far as two that I suggested. Somewhere in between, I'm sure, is where you would land.
This body will be happy to review it again.
Yeah. I understand, thank you all.
Thank you.
And parking in urban environments is always, that's part of the fun of it, right? Where it's kind of a mess, but just looking at that and thinking about Thanksgiving or Christmas, and Amazon trucks delivering, and it's a lot going on.
Yeah.
I think, I'd rather see this than nothing, but I think that you guys can do some stuff to make everybody happy.
You got it.
I think somewhere back in there, we might have heard a motion. Mr. Wright, would you like to make a motion?
Move for deferral.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer. Ms. Abel-Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Our next item is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding warehouse uses and pertaining to end notes for Chart One, uses permitted by zoning district. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning commission. Our second public hearing tonight is for a zoning ordinance amendment to Chart, to End Note eighteen of Chart One, Uses Permitted. This end note pertains to the use warehousing, transporting, and distributing. I believe it was around 2017 when we put the end note in its current form in the zoning ordinance, where we stated that, and the, the way the end note reads right now is that warehouses incidental and accessory to another use are permitted by right wherever such other use is permitted. So some of the examples I gave in my staff comments were, would be a small warehouse accessory to where a contractor might store his or her equipment and materials indoors. Or another example would be a warehouse accessory to a hardware store, plumbing supply, retail business, which would be a use allowed by, allowed in the CH zone as well, where the primary use of the property is a retail showroom for residential customers, but where there also might be a warehouse where inventory is stocked for sale for contractors. So, um, the way our, our ordinance reads right now is that warehouses incidental and accessory to another use are permitted by right wherever such other use is permitted. So, so that footnote was put in there on purpose so as not to disallow warehouses that are truly accessory and incidental to permitted uses, for example, the ones that I, that I mentioned. And accessory by its, by its very definition in the zoning ordinance includes subordinate an area, an extent, and purpose to the principal use. So an accessory use or an accessory structure has to be smaller than the principal use or the principal structure by definition in the zoning ordinance. So what is, what is permitted by right truly are accessory in nature to what is, to the, to the permitted principal use. So what we are proposing to do is to provide some clarity to this, to this end note. So we're really kind of just restating it in a different way, and I'll read it to you as it's proposed right now. The way it's proposed to read is that warehouses incidental and accessory to a permitted onsite principal use, and which do not include non-retail distribution activities, are permitted by right. Use of a facility for bulk delivery, storage, and handling items intended to be distributed for sale or assembly at another location, one, shall in all cases be classified as a warehousing, transporting, or distributing use; two, shall be subject to the provisions of this zoning ordinance as though such use were the principal use of the premises without regard to other uses on the premises; and three, shall be permitted only in the zoning districts identified for such use in Chart One. And so the warehousing, transporting, and distributing use as a principal use is only allowed in the industrial zoning districts, light industrial, general industrial, and heavy industrial. But as I mentioned, there are some zoning, there are some uses where the accessory type of warehouses would be, would be allowed in the CH zoning district, for example. So the, the contractor's office, the hardware store, plumbing supply business, those uses are permitted in the commercial highway zone, not in, as well as the industrial zones, but those accessory warehouses would be allowed in the commercial highway zone, as long as they were accessory to the, the principal use, including being subordinate an area to that principal use. So what this would clarify, or what, what it would reinforce is that a warehouse that is accessory to a retail establishment, for example, would only be permitted if the goods stored in the warehouse were for that particular location, whereas a warehouse attached to a retail establishment that is used for the distribution of his, of its goods to other physical locations or stores would only be permitted in the LI, GI, and HI zones. And it would not affect the types of accessory warehouses that are already permitted in the, by this end note in the zoning ordinance. So this, so this amendment is really to provide clarity to that, to that end note that is already in our zoning ordinance. And, you know, we think that will provide just some, some clearer language for all those involved who might be, who might be using our zoning ordinance. So we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this zoning ordinance amendment tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I've got a comment.
Comment.
After multiple discussions with Adam Tucker, the city attorney today, let's have the public hearing, then we need to defer due to some legalities that he's looking into.
Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Okay. If there are none, we will open the public hearing and ask if we have anybody tonight that would like to come forward to speak on this item. Okay. We will close the public hearing. Any further discussion before we ask for a motion?
Motion to defer.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacko. Ms. Abel-Water? Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. So much for our public hearings tonight. We heard them all.
There you go.
Okay, we'll move on to staff reports and other business. First item is a mandatory referral to consider the dedication of an electric easement on city-owned property located along Overall Street. Middle Tennessee Electric is the applicant. Mr. Blimley.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Our first mandatory referral tonight is for the dedication of a Middle Tennessee Electric easement on city-owned property along Overall Street. This is directly adjacent to the Lidle Creek Greenway. Middle Tennessee Electric is upgrading its power lines in the area in order to provide backup power to St. Thomas Rutherford Hospital in the event the main power source is disruptive, and the proposed easement will accommodate the proposed electric infrastructure that is to be located on the city's property. The site is on the aerial photo on the overhead. We've reached out to other utilities, and so we would recommend... The Planning Commission recommend approval of this request to the city council, subject to the following conditions. If approved by city council, MTE will be... I was fixing to say MTB. That's me. So MTE will be responsible for providing the information necessary, including but not limited to any exhibits and legal descriptions, for the legal department to prepare legal instruments to formally dedicate the proposed easement in question. The legal instruments will be subject to the final review and approval of the legal department. Number two, MTE will be responsible for recording these instruments, including payment of the recording fee. I know that's not me. Any new poles will need to be located a minimum of three feet from Atmos gas facilities. If the requested separation cannot be adhered to, then MTE will need to contact Atmos to discuss an alternative solution. And number four, Comcast has both aerial and underground facilities at this pole, and MTE will need to coordinate the proposed work with Comcast. As I mentioned, I contact the utilities just to make sure that they don't have any conflicts.
Okay. Any questions?
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jeko. Ms. Ava Water? Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay, and one more item. We have another mandatory referral, and it's to consider the dedication of an electric easement on city-owned property at 802 Casen Lane. Middle Tennessee Electric is the applicant. Mr. Blimley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a similar request from Middle Tennessee Electric. This is on the fire station property at 802 Casen Lane. MTE proposes to upgrade its power lines in this area in order to provide greater reliability and capacity to the area during peak winter and summer loading seasons, quote-unquote. The proposed easement will accommodate the proposed electric infrastructure that will be located on the city's property. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this request to the city council, subject to the following conditions. The first two are the same two that I read earlier, so I'll not read those again. And number three, any new poles will need to be located a minimum of three feet from Atmos gas facilities. If the requested separation cannot be adhered to, then MTE will need to contact Atmos to discuss an alternative solution. Number four, AT&amp;T has buried facilities in this area. MTE will need to locate all cables before it digs. And number five, MTE will need to meet all Murfreesboro Water Resources' separation requirements from existing water and/or sewer infrastructure. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jeko. Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Silas?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any other staff reports, any other business?
Just an update on continuing education, which I'm sure all of you are waiting with bated breath on. I will find out from Cumberland Region tomorrow whether or not they have the recorded version of that seminar at MTSU, and then also received word from TAPA that there will be a training session over the summer, and so I'll keep you all apprised of that as well.
Okay. Okay. There's no other business. We stand adjourned.